Good evening and welcome to our June 24 Paulding County School Board meeting. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. We have, are joined today by our Board Attorney and Parliamentarian, Mr. Tom Cable, and of course, our Superintendent, Mr. Barnett. At this time, I need a motion to approve our proposed agenda.
So moved.
Wow, so moved by Mr. Clayton, seconded by Ms. Lyons. Yes, Ms. Lyons is second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor. And it is unanimous. My pen has decided to run out of ink all of a sudden. All right, so that is five, and we have two that are not here right at the moment. At this time, I would like to take a quick minute to introduce you all to our newest board member, Ms. Trudy Sauer. We are excited to have her here. Yes, absolutely. But at this time, I would like to turn our meeting over to Mr. Cable so that he can do the pledge, the board member pledge with Ms. Trudy.
Ms. Sauer, I'm going to read just a little statement, and then I'm going to administer an ethics oath for you at the end if you just say "I will" or "I do." The Paulding County Board of Education is committed to conducting its affairs in the most transparent and ethical manner possible. In pursuit of this commitment, the Board has formally adopted a Code of Ethics Board Policy BH, including a public affirmation of their dedication to upholding this ethical framework, reflecting the Board's unwavering dedication to principled governance. So Ms. Sauer, if you would, just raise your right hand. As a board member of the Paulding County Board of Education, I hereby acknowledge and agree to abide with Board policies, and I will observe and enforce state laws and regulations pertaining to education. I will accept office as a board member as a means of unselfish service. I will transact school business only in regular sessions. I will represent the entire community without fear or favor. I will remember at all times that I am one of a team. I will accept all board decisions once they are made and assist in carrying them out effectively. I will delegate action to the chief school administrator as the board executive and confine board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Therefore, as a board member of the Paulding County Board of Education, I hereby acknowledge and commit to abide with Board Policy BH regarding board ethics. And further, I will agree that the first meeting of each year or the first meeting of a new board member to execute the aforementioned pledge, which shall become part of the Board's minutes for that meeting. And if you agree, say "I do" or "I will."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're official. All right, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session where we will only be discussing personnel and legal matters. No votes will be taken except for the approval of the executive session minutes from our previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, there we go.
All right.
So moved by Ms. Sauer. Seconded by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adjourning to executive session, please raise your hands. It is unanimous, 5-0. And we are adjourned.
Think about that.
Pledge of Pledge.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Now.
You can just hit.
I would like to call our regular session, June 24th Board Meeting, back in session. We have reconvened from executive session where no votes were taken except for the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Wayne Strickland. Hang on one second. Let's let some of these folks come in. Is Mr. Strickland?
We still have a pledge of purpose.
We are actually in, we are live. And I'm looking for minutes.
I wanted to ask you something. I'm going to do, I want to do a thing to honor Barbara Corin because she's the one who started the scholarships. I promise you it won't be long, but is it okay to do that?
Well, when we call you up in just a minute, we'll take care of that.
Well, whenever you're ready for scholarships, I can do it, but I want to do that before I give the scholarships. Well, I got three scholarships.
Okay, that works. Can anybody tell me if Mr. Strickland? There we go. So, can I get Mr. Strickland to come to, Wayne Strickland from Bethany Baptist Church, Christian Church, to come to the podium to lead us in our invocation and our pledge? You'll all stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, we just come before you tonight. God, we come before you with gratitude for the opportunity that you've given us to serve our students in this county. Father, to serve our faculty, to serve our staff, to serve the families, and just to serve our community. God, I just thank you for that opportunity. I pray that you would give this board wisdom, that you would give this board clarity as they make tough decisions, decisions that'll shape the future of our schools, decisions that'll shape the future of our students. Father, I pray that you would just help us all to listen to one another with open hearts. God, help us to speak with kindness and to act with integrity. And God, may our efforts reflect a spirit of unity. May our efforts reflect a spirit of compassion and a shared commitment to excellence in everything that we do, especially excellence in education. God bless our students with curiosity. Bless our students with courage. Bless our teachers with strength and with patience, and bless our families with support and understanding. And God, we just continue to ask for your continued blessings on each person in this county. God, we pray that you would continue to protect everyone in this school system. And Father, we ask that you would guide this meeting with your presence and with your peace. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. Bethany Christian Church. All right. At this time, I need someone to make a motion to approve our minutes from various meetings. We have our regular session on June 10th, public hearing on June 10th at 8:00 a.m., public hearing on June 10th at 6:00 p.m., public hearing on June 17th, called board meeting on June 17th at 8:30 a.m., and called board meeting on June 19th. Can I get a motion? Yes, sir.
So moved.
Well, hang on. Madam Chair, I want to make a motion that we approve items A through F, all in one vote.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Everyone was here except for Mrs. Sauer. She would be the only abstention.
I have a motion to approve the minutes, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Thank you so much. All of those meetings in one vote, so I have a motion by Mr. Fuller, I have a second by Mr. Chester, and yes, everyone was at each one of those meetings with the exception of Ms. Sauer. So, if there's any other discussion on the approval of all of those minutes? Hearing, none, all in favor of approving all of those minutes in one vote, raise your hands. Okay, that would be six, I mean five, I'm sorry, five, one, with Ms. Sauer's abstaining because she was not actually attending those meetings. All right, at this time, we'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We are honored to have the Pauling Retired Educators Association here with us. I know Ms. Lester's here. I know, in fact, you were going to come up and we're going to talk about, we're going to honor Ms. Corin, and we're going to talk about some scholarships to be awarded. So, yeah, if you guys want to step on up, and I mean, I'll just say that it's awesome that even in retirement, their passion for education, their passion for our school district doesn't end when they have retired, so we're so thankful for them. And I know there's several from here tonight. Ms. Swift is here as well, so if you want to step on up and get going, Ms. Lester, are you going to carry? We thought we were going to have to have security come escort you back away from, so you were so eager, and now you're not, so thank you for being here.
I'm not too loud, but I'll try.
Some people tell me I have to have a microphone. I don't know. Is that, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Slide it down. You can slide it down closer to you, that way you can.
Slide this down. Might break that one right there.
Sure, that's good. Ms. Lester, yeah.
Thank you so much to everyone on the board. I know you probably don't get a lot of recognition sometimes, less teachers do, but I do want to thank you for all the times that you have listened to me talk about scholarships. I wanted to bring to your attention, you may or may not know, Ms. Barbara Corin was a longtime teacher, and she was most of the time the principal of New Georgia. She can't be with us today, but she did make the scholarships that I'll be giving out shortly. Barbara is not in good condition, but she's hanging on there, so if you know Barbara and want to touch base with her, I know she would appreciate it. But what I was going to tell about Barbara, when I retired in 2000, after teaching 32 years, I thought I was done, until she grabbed me one day at a meeting we had and said, "Well, would you help me start having scholarships?" And I said, "Well, sure." So, that's how it started, and we are very blessed in Paulding County to have teachers and parents and even others that have really helped us. Sometimes it's monetary, sometimes it's just helping somebody. And the students that we have had, we've been blessed to give to. It's really heart touching when they come to you and tell you that, you know, that they've succeeded in what they were trying to do. So, with that said, I would like to give our scholarships at this time, if that's okay, or do you want me to wait? Okay. Okay, would the scholarship winners please come up? I'm sorry, I'm walking around terribly. Somebody got in my way the other day and I fell. I'm just going to share a few things for, we actually have only three winners, and one of them could not be here because she, her mother is sick, so she'll be getting hers soon. So I was going to tell a little bit about these ladies that are not here. This is Anna Ingram. Raise your hand so they'll know who you are. Always the teacher, right, boys?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Anna graduated from Kennesaw University in May 18, May 18, and her true passion is being a teacher. Yay! In March of 2024, she published her first children's book. I promise you, if you look, in a few years, she'll be on TV, or her books will. She is a teacher at Nebo Elementary, and she is seeking a specialist degree. Congratulations. And did I drop yours on the floor? No, here it is. Congratulations to you. You know, I've got enough pictures to make. Okay, our next candidate is, her name is Heather Argo, but she's the one that's not here, and she will be getting her thing from May, her, she's getting a special degree, and I can't even read all this. It's Specialist Instructional Technology at West Georgia, so she'll be doing that. Okay, our next one. She's afraid I'm going to say her name wrong because I've asked her only three times how much, how you spell it, how you say it. But this young lady is Margaret?
Darienso.
Darienso. Give me a holler! Oh, man. I had a little boy one time, and he was from another country. He couldn't say English, and I couldn't say his language, so I finally made a name up for him and called him Pedro, and he went with that name the whole time he's in school. Okay, Ms. Margaret, you currently have a Bachelor's in Arts and Secondary Biological Education, and you are seeking a Master of Arts in Science.
Yes.
Congratulations to you, and she is at the new school, Crossroads. So let's give her a big hand. Oh, you want a picture?
Her certificate.
Her certificate.
You need to give it to her.
Oh. See what happens, y'all, when you get old, can't remember nothing, something's standing in front of you. Again, I want to thank the board for all that you do, that all of your help has been to us and for us, and I promise you, as long as I'm in it and they let me stay, I'm going to keep going. If not, we'll have to replace me. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Yeah, group picture.
They're going to take us, take a group picture.
Don't show up, we got anything there.
You have to hide it.
Trying to face me, so I can. All right, guys, big pretty smile. You get a couple more? Amazing, thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll move on with the superintendent's report with your permission.
Thank you very much.
I did want to mention, believe it or not, open house for the upcoming school year is just a few weeks away. We will welcome students and families across the district to our schools on Tuesday, July 29th. Please visit our website for additional details. As in previous years, open house will be held at two time slots at all three school levels based on the student's last name. Pauling Virtual Academy also will hold a virtual open house on July 29th. Specific information on how to participate will be sent directly to families of PVA enrolled students, and the Pauling College and Career Academy will host an in-person open house on July 29th as well. PCCA students and their families are welcome to visit the academy anytime between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., and if you blink, it'll be the first day of school in 38 days, but who's counting? So it's coming, so just wanted to start to mention that. You know, we have a lot of events happening all over the school district during the summer and from Horizons that's going on at Hiram Elementary to just numerous school-level programs, but to highlight just one such event, I wanted to join a parent, Terry Johnson, in recognizing Coach Stark, Jackson, and Byrne and the North Pauling High School Football Program for hosting the Wolf Pack Strong Every Ability Camp, which gave some of our students with disabilities a chance to experience being a high school football player. These coaches and students from the football team and girls tennis team went out of their way to make these kids feel special. As Mr. Johnson said, I quote, "This camp was not to benefit their program, North Pauling High School. It was purely put on to make a difference and to ensure that no child in the county is forgotten. Their unselfish behavior is a credit not only to North Pauling High School, but to the Pauling County School District as a whole. My son felt special and got to be a football player for one great afternoon," and that's him in the bottom right there, so. Another example is our partnership with the Pauling Family Connections for the annual Stuff the Bus Event. This year, on July 12th, we invite everyone to help us stuff a bus with school supplies and backpacks at either West Ridge Church or Bethany Christian Church between 9:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Signups are now closed, but those who registered will be able to pick up their backpacks on July 19th at Dobbin's Middle School from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Of course, the goal of Stuff the Bus is to ensure that our students start the school year with supplies and the supplies and backpacks that they need. For many of our employees, summer is a busy time, both personally but also professionally. Many will attend various professional development opportunities to enhance their instructional practices, deepen content knowledge, and better support student learning. Some will provide that professional development, so not only for our staff but for educators around the state. I just wanted to mention a few of those. For example, Dr. Tiffany Frazier, our Associate Superintendent there, here with us tonight and up there on the screen, joined Kim Freeman, who is our Assistant Director of Literacy. They presented a session on the implementation of our literacy initiatives at the Georgia Lit Link Conference this summer, which is one of the premier literacy conferences in the state. The event was co-hosted by the Georgia Department of Education and the Rollin Center for Language and Literacy and brought together educators across Georgia. Their presentation highlighted how Pauling is aligning the science of reading with Georgia's new ELA standards and screeners and other elements to create a strong research-based literacy system that supports all learners. And shameless plug, or we were, correct me if I'm wrong, we were the only public school district invited to share how we designed and supported our professional learning on the science of reading for all elementary schools. Is that still correct? So kudos to you guys, that's a high honor. And then just to mention a couple of others, Dr. Cynthia Davies, there's our Executive Director of School Improvement, also presented at the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement. Last week, she taught two breakout sessions highlighting our continuous improvement process. That's the annual cycle we use with schools to monitor the impact of their school improvement plans. And then Dr. Heather White, who's our Executive Director of Student Services and Business Services at VDI, are going to present and on a panel at the Georgia Federal Programs Conference next week. So we have folks spread out all over this summer. Did I miss, did I miss anyone, Ms. Frazier?
I don't know right now, we're going in one direction.
So, so kudos to them for supporting our own staff but also just education across the state of Georgia. We're excited to celebrate the opening of our 20th classroom addition, our 20 classroom addition to a Northside Elementary. The ribbon cutting will take place on July 8th at 10:30 a.m. in the gymnasium, followed by a brief ceremony, then we'll cut the ribbon and officially open the classroom wing, but then following that with some tours of the new facility. But of course, everyone's welcome to attend that, but I just did want to mention just a couple of quick statistics. So with this addition, which is roughly 26,000 square feet, we will have added 183 classrooms or instructional units across the district in just the last five years without incurring any additional debt. After the opening of our addition at Roberts Elementary, which will be a little bit later this summer, and with the elementary school on Timber Wolf Drive opening this time next year, we will have added 342 classrooms or instructional units, almost 450,000 square feet, again, without incurring any additional debt and doing so just in the last five years. So just obviously a lot going on, and so kudos to everyone involved with that with our Capital Projects team. So also just want to mention our next board meeting will be the Board's Work Session on July 8th, starting at 8:30 a.m. Of course, the ribbon cutting is later that day at 10:30 at Northside, and then the ribbon cutting for the addition at Roberts Elementary is at 4:30 prior to the board meeting at 5:30 on the 22nd of July. Madam Chair, that is all I have for the superintendent's report.
All right. Are we ready for the consent agenda?
We are. There are five items that were brought to the board at the last meeting. They include the renewal of invitation to bid 22-220311, which is Waste service, Waste Removal Services to Waste Industries of Atlanta, a continuation of the RFP 21-200916 WAN and Internet Services to Comcast Business, the renewal of invitation to bid 22-220614 Fencing and Gate Replacement and Installation to L&amp;L Fence and Fabrication, the renewal of invitation to bid 24-231212 Network Equipment and Maintenance to PC Solutions and Integration, and then finally, the renewal of invitation to bid 24-240202 Network Components and Recabling Sections 1 and 2 to AIOS Group of Macon, Georgia. So those are the five items that were presented at the last board meeting, and I do ask, request approval of the consent agenda this evening.
Hearing the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of our consent agenda with the five items just mentioned, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Clayton, second by Ms. Lyons. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please raise your hands, and it is unanimous.
And then, Madam Chair, moving into the action agenda, the only item tonight is the approval of the personnel report, and I do ask for the board's approval of, the report is presented this evening, which includes items 1 through 69 but removing item 17 for a separate vote.
Okay. Hearing the superintendent's recommendation to award the approval of personnel items 1 through 69 with item number 17 removed, do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Sauer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fuller. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving personnel items 1 through 69 with the exception of item number 17, please raise your hand, and it is unanimous.
And then, Madam Chair, I ask for approval of line item 17 from that report.
And now, may I have a motion for approval of personnel item number 17?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Clayton, second. Second by Ms. Lyons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving personnel item number 17. That would be five with one abstention.
That's all I have this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, I believe we, is there any public participation? All right, so our next item would be board member comments. Ms. Lyons, you get to go first.
Well, I'd like to start really welcoming Ms. Judy Sauer, a new board member, and she just lay in, she's just lovely sitting over there. And otherwise, I really don't have anything else, that's about it.
All right, I would as well welcome Ms. Sauer. You will be a great addition here, and we're excited to have you. Also wanted to congratulate the three individuals that got the scholarships this evening. That's an exciting opportunity for them, and we're excited for what they're going to do with the education that they're getting and how that will apply in the classrooms, so we want to congratulate them. I just want to say, enjoy what's left of your summer. We are all working diligently behind the scenes to get ready for that, did you say 38 days? Can't believe it. But I know our staff is probably sweating bullets with all that they have to do over the next 38 days, but I just want to thank you guys for your hard work and tell the rest of you to enjoy those 38 days because school will be here, that school bus will be pulling up before you know it. Thank you.
Congratulations to the three teachers that want to further their education, and thank you to the Retired Teachers Association that continues to provide those scholarships. We always look forward to having them out to present those every year, and congratulations, Ms. Sauer, look forward to serving with you, and as Teresa said, I think you're going to fit right in, so glad you're here.
Ditto. No, but welcome, Ms. Sauer. It's good to have you here, we're glad you joined us and signed up to be in this show with us, and thank you to the retired teachers. It's always great to see teachers pouring back into teachers. It kind of reminded me also, though, of a scene, I haven't really told anybody this, but at Hiram High School's graduation, there was a young girl that showed up in Crocs, and a teacher gave her her own shoes so that she could walk in that ceremony. And so it just shows the teachers, the love, the compassion they have for each other, our students, and other teachers, so we just really appreciate them, and everyone have a great night.
That's awesome. Ms. Sauer?
I'd just like to say I'm proud to be here. It feels like coming home, and I was absolutely overwhelmed. overwhelmed by the positive comments that I've read and the phone calls, the messages. It's been, it's, it almost made me cry. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Chester?
I'm in the great position to say ditto to my colleagues. Thankful to be here in the middle of the summer and know what clock is turning, and it'd be time to get the show back on the road again. But I'm thankful to be here and everybody enjoy this summer. Be safe, be safe, be safe. And appreciate your families and all the work that everyone's done. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adjourning, please raise your hands. We are adjourned.